Good evening and welcome to the Greenfield Public Schools School Committee Meeting. It's Wednesday, November 9th, 2022, 6:00 PM. We're at 35 Pleasant Street, the John's On Community Center, and GCTV is recording this meeting. We will move right into our agenda with a roll call, please. Secretary Exstrom?
Member Deniev.
Here.
Secretary Exstrom, I am here. Member Johnson-Massad.
Here.
Member Martini?
Here.
Chair Poiroti.
Here.
Vice Chair Wall.
Here.
Mayor, what do you got, Karen?
Here.
We are all present.
Called this meeting to order at 6:01 PM, and it is my great pleasure to start us off with a really fun and wonderfully significant item for the Greenfield Public Schools, and that is an acknowledgement of John Hickey's Coach of the Year Award for Softball for 21-22. And I'd like to actually invite Coach Hickey to come up, if he would be so kind to come up, and that way we can get you on camera. And I'm actually gonna ask ASKP to give us some words of acknowledgement of your award. Congratulations. Thank you for joining us tonight. Yeah, move that closer. Press it so the green light comes on on the collar there. You might have to hold it the first time. Yeah, let it go and see what happens. There you go.
Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
John, I would like to extend my sincere congratulations to you for receiving the MIAA 2021-22 Coach of the Year for Softball Award. I have worked with John for over 10 years and have witnessed firsthand his dedication and commitment to our students, not only in the classroom, but obviously in athletics as well. His teaching and coaching style are built upon inclusivity, respect, encouragement, and acceptance. While he wants to win, of course, he does not put winning first. He has always put the individual or the team as a whole and what they can learn, grow, and achieve together as a top priority. I know the students you have coached over the years, no matter the sport, along with your family, fellow coaches, and colleagues are certainly proud of you for this achievement. I, along with the rest of the Greenfield school system and the Greenfield community as a whole, are thrilled for you as well. It is so well deserved. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Oh, yes, please say a few words, and you're ready to answer some questions, too.
Maybe. Thanks for the recognition. It's really appreciated. I'm humbled to receive this award. I coach to win, but I coach for the kids and I coach for the community. I get so much out of it. It's really the memories I've had over the years. It's really special to me. This season being, you know, extra special, not just because we won the States, but because of the type of kids that were playing for me. Some of them are sitting right back there. Girls, stand up.
Congratulations to all of you as well.
Great bunch of kids. Made my job very easy, and I enjoy going to practice every day. And I think we had a great time last year, and I think we're gonna have another good time this spring. Right, girls? I'd like to thank Mike Kacheski, my A.D. and best friend. We went to high school together. I don't know if you guys knew that, but he did a great job building a schedule for us, a really competitive schedule against some really tough teams, just to get us ready for the postseason play. So, thank you, Mike. The administration at the high school for their support. I'm jumping around here. My wife, Stacy. The parents were very supportive. They, you know, they do so much behind-the-scenes stuff. Let's see, who else? Oh, Ray Dodge is a parent of one of our players. He took on the role of a scorekeeper, which is a really important job. And he is a summer coach, so he knows a lot of the opposing players that we play against. So, he was very helpful in that aspect. And Andy Rup was an assistant coach of mine who helps out, and the girls like picking on Andy. But he's very knowledgeable, so it definitely takes a village. And like I said, I'm humbled, and those people and these players deserve all the credit. I'm just there for the ride, so to speak. So, I appreciate your support, and hopefully we can do it again.
Yes, thank you. We're definitely looking forward to the next season to see what happens. Good luck. Good luck to you all.
We lost really, two really important seniors, obviously. Caitlin's here. She's back from UMass. She's back there. She was a heck of a center fielder. Our catcher is playing in college now, Kelsey, so they're gonna be missed, but we got some younger kids that are gonna step up and fill their roles. And should be a fun and exciting season this spring.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's the way to start off, right? Thank you all for being here, too, to support Coach Hickey. Let's approve the minutes from October 12th meeting. If I could have a motion to approve those?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
And any discussion? Hearing none. Any abstentions? Any no votes? Those pass unanimously. All right, I just lost my agenda. Hang on. Public comment?
Hold on. I'm probably gonna say the same thing that you are. There's another minute that's in here, October 17th. It's not in our agenda, so I'm quite certain that we can't.
Oh, no, I knew. Yeah, sorry.
Do anything about them, but they are here, so we'll have to hold those over to our next meeting.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so we'll move into public comment? Oh, we have had to update the agenda a couple times, so it must have gotten lost somewhere. That's fine. We'll do it next month.
Do you want person to sign up for public comment?
Please, sure. Come on up. Don't be shy. Looks like Coach Hickey left the mic on for you.
Perfect.
Ms. Levine. So, just state your name and where you live, and you have three minutes.
My name is Paula Levine. I'm from Greenfield. I'm a teacher at Four Corners. I just want to speak on behalf of our IAs. The day in the life of an IA, I mean, as we know, it's hard to get IAs into work in the schools. And they are the most flexible people. They get bounced around. You know, I have one IA who spends, you know, a half hour in second grade, then moves to a different grade for an hour, then is doing lunch, recess duty, and then they have to turn and become the art teacher. And I've encouraged them to come and speak because I think it's important that everybody is hearing from them and knowing, you know, they come in, you know, some of them are sick through their stomach because they never know what they're gonna be doing when they come in. You know, I had another one that said, "I can't come and speak because if I come up here and I start talking, I'm gonna start crying." So, I just think it's important that we at least work hard to give them a contract that they deserve. As we all know, our buildings are only as good as the wonderful IAs we have. And I just think that they need to know that we appreciate them and, you know, that we can do what we can do to support them. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you. And now we will move into item four, which is the report of the student representatives to the committee. Take it away, guys. Do you want, you don't have to share a microphone. We can give you an extra one. Would you eat like your own? Eat like your own?
I think we're all set unless you have a specific preference.
Go ahead, please.
So, starting with Student Council. The Student Council brought six officers to Middleborough on the 29th for state-level training. Students attended four student-led workshops with leaders from across the Commonwealth. There are still a few class officer positions available, and recently each grade is well underway with their lip syncs, and we are still finalizing the script for the day before Thanksgiving. We will begin playing turkey bingo and having a pep rally after the Key Club runs the turkey trot that day.
For Spanish Club, they just celebrated Dia de los Muertos with breakfast and face painting while remembering our lost loved ones. Plans continue for our April trip to Puerto Rico.
Nineteen new members were inducted at the ceremony at GHS for NHS by reception with cake and cookies. We have met to start plans with our volunteer program with the local adoptive family. Plans are also underway for a peer tutoring program on Thursdays after school in the library.
French Club recently spent after-school hours pumpkin carving and have been working on multiple fundraisers to help fund the Quebec trip in April. If you have any interest in signing up, please reach out to Madame Hartman.
Spectrum recently upgraded their bulletin board for Transgender Awareness Month and are planning an upcoming movie night.
The music department has been working, are performing at football games, and Friday we'll march in the Veterans Day parade.
For athletics, the fall season has come to an end with the last football game occurring tomorrow night, home versus Lelou at 6:00 PM, and cross-country running in the state sectional meet on Sunday, the 13th, at Gardner Golf Course. Field hockey made the round of 16 for the state tournament. Unfortunately, they lost. Good luck to all the seniors who played their final fall sports season this year. And winter sports start on November 28th. Sign up on Family ID or go to Arbiter Live to get the schedules. Call the athletics hotline with any questions or concerns at 413-772-1350, extension 1106.
Library Club held a spooky writing workshop, explored astrology, and is working on plans for an upcoming book-to-movie series. Voting for the titles we will read and watch will go live later in November.
And then finally, beginning earlier this week, the Yonder phone patch system saw a full reset, and we have returned to the rules and regulations of day one. All students are expected to show proof at the door that their phones are locked up, and any students who previously filled out any forms in relation to not possessing a phone must do so once more. The overall student response to this seems to be, or seems to remain the same. Many still opposed to the process of Yonder and its processes. Though there is seemingly less destruction of pouches in the physical sense, which is always very nice to see, students are still vocal about their dislike towards the current system. It is widely understood by all that phones are a problem, but most would still like to see a different handling of the issue. Thank you. That covers everything.
Thank you, guys. And do we have any questions or comments from school committee members for our student reps? All right, thank you, guys. Please hold. Okay, so, I know, it's so ridiculous, right? Me with my glasses, that's what's ridiculous. The reports from the administration, so we'll start with ASKP, Assistant Superintendent. Go ahead. And you're gonna do them both. I should have, I should have mentioned the elephant in the room. The superintendent wasn't feeling well and was not, is not able to attend tonight, which is why she is not here. And I neglected to tell everyone that, but that is, someone should have kicked me or something. Go ahead, Karen.
Do you want me to do them together?
However you want to approach it is fine.
I'll do them separate. That way we can, if you have comments or questions for me, we can take those after my report, and then I'll just summarize some of Christine's report for her. For my report, we had our district-wide professional development day yesterday. We had numerous workshops in all of our six buildings going on for staff K through 12. We also had numerous staff engaged with the Collaborative for Educational Services, and they offered some science, some physical education, and music and art professional development opportunities for those folks. So, we had a very productive day yesterday, district-wide. We are going through some of the responses for the evaluations and have received positive feedback from many of the sessions that folks were engaged with. On library news, we have finished finally the weeding at Four Corners, and you have that surplus declaration on the agenda this evening. And Deb Kern, who's been volunteering with us, who is a certified librarian, she and I are going to meet next Monday at AEL, and we're gonna start weeding the library at our pre-K, and then she's going to follow up at a staff meeting on November 30th to discuss with the teachers and the principal their needs moving forward. In the grant world, we received our TAG grant, and we're excited because DESI has allowed us the opportunity to use these funds for district-wide leadership teams, not just solely for the two schools that are identified as needing assistance. Postings for teachers to be part of those instructional leadership teams have been up, and we look forward to having a district-wide team that is trained and all working on the same district-wide initiatives. We also are engaged in another High Quality Instructional Material Professional Learning Network with DESI for the high school math department, and a grant just was released yesterday that we are applying for with regards to getting the field costs or professional development and stipends for staff to attend that, paid for through that grant. The one caveat with this grant is they aren't going to supply monies to pay for the instructional materials themselves, but we're excited that they're going to cover the cost of other things involved in this process. We had our second meeting with the high school math folks last Wednesday in the learn and prepare phase. We're going to be meeting with the whole math department at a future faculty meeting and also rolling out our parameters and priorities at a school council meeting at the high school date to be determined. And then, per your school committee policy, you need a homeschool yearly summary given to you each year, and my office also handles homeschool. So, this is our updated summary for 2022-23 as of last Friday. We have 147 active files compared to 197 last year. We are still working out with families to confirm on 20 inactive or incomplete files to secure whether or not those students are going to re-enroll or continue in homeschool. We did have 10 families re-enroll in Greenfield Public Schools, and you can see the denotations per grade. We also had six students who have aged out and four that graduated. My office continues to monitor the homeschool process, and we update our records on an ongoing basis, but this is our yearly summary per year policy.
Thank you. Why don't we take questions, comments on that first, and then?
Sure.
Okay. Questions or comments from school committee members about the Assistant Superintendent's report? Member Martini, go ahead.
In regards to the TAG grant, how much money was received?
$50,000.
And in regards to the HQIM grant, how much do you hope to receive, and when do you expect to have an answer?
So, those details are being worked out. There was no dollar amount associated with it, so you had to develop a plan, submit the plan, and then they return what they think is an estimated cost that you can apply for. So, Christine and I finished our plan yesterday, and we're just waiting to hear back from DESI as to the range in which we can apply to. They do an up to amount.
Okay. And about the homeschoolers, adding up the active files and the inactive and complete ones, the ones that have re-enrolled and those who have aged out or graduated, it looks like that's 187, and there was 197 last year. So, what are the other 10? Are those people that moved away?
So, they either moved or they enrolled in other school districts.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Secretary Exstrom, go ahead.
Just anecdotal question. Someone who's being homeschooled, how do you determine that they've graduated? I mean, I assume if you're homeschooling, I mean...
So, they do still have to meet the time-on-learning requirements. So, they have to submit a plan with that. If they choose to engage in MCAS, they can, so do if they choose to. Most of them do not. So, at no time do we issue any diploma from Greenville Public Schools because, obviously, they're not our student. So, they don't ever attain that. They just meet the hours of time on learning.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions or comments? All right. How about the superintendent's report?
Switch. You have a copy in your packet. I'm just gonna do some highlights of her report, but obviously if you have further need-to-know things, she certainly welcomes you emailing her as well. I was blessed to actually attend the National Honor Society induction ceremony and got to speak at that, and 18 students were inducted, so it was a really nice celebration. Congratulations, Chair, because Marina was also inducted that evening, so it was a very proud moment. We have continued and continued to interview and post for IAs and substitute teacher positions. I continued interview along with Christine, anyone who applies. We had three more interviews this week, and we do have others set up, so we are not giving up on the search to fill our instructional assistant or substitute teaching openings. The re-envisioning school facilities, we have finalized all six of those meetings. We had 37 separate individuals attend at different locations. Christine is now beginning the process of scheduling meetings for community feedback along with feedback from our faculty and staff. Strategic planning, we have begun. We've had the first two sessions with TMS and Dr. Whoel. Our next meeting is scheduled in December, and we have been going through the process of analyzing data, seeing where we have opportunities, seeing where we have strengths and weaknesses, and what we can do to organize such a strategic plan. It's been very interesting thus far, and we look forward to continuing that work. We did apply for an Improving Ventilation and Air Quality Grant, which will partially fund the Greenfield Middle School Energy Recovery Units. So, we are hopeful with that. That grant has been submitted. The rest of the balance for that project will be a capital request this year. And the budget process for FY '24 will begin, and we'll be working again with Andy Paquette and administrators and compiling a budget, and then meeting the deadlines of the city and the school committee. Those are the highlights from Christine.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions or comments from the committee? Member Deniev, please go ahead.
Can I ask a question about your, about your update? I'm sorry, I should have asked before.
Go ahead.
About the homeschool yearly summary, I just have a question. Do any of the homeschooling families utilize any of the resources at GPS, or do they, is it entirely, are they entirely divested of that and on their own?
The only resources, because of our policy, that they can access is Special Education Services.
Okay. All right, that's all. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Other questions or comments from the committee on either of the reports from the administration? All right, I'm not seeing any, so we will move on. The school committee reports. I do not have a chair's report tonight, I don't think. I do think we have reports from budget as well as policy and also reimagining, right? Okay, yes, yes. Excellent. So, let's do budget first.
Our meeting was fairly direct and black and white, short and sweet. We were given some materials to review about with having had all of the employees realigned as much as could be at that point. One thing that we did discuss, that the full committee asked us to discuss, is if there was some way that we could pinpoint funding to be provided for committee members who wanted to attend professional development. And what came out of our discussion is that 2,000 that's in there right now is, seems appropriate, and if we need to figure it, because we don't have people who are accessing it, it didn't seem necessary to increase it right now. And so, that's, and if we needed to at a later date, we could do that, and the superintendent assured us that there would be a way to sort of coordinate it if that was necessary. And so, from that discussion, our recommendation is there's nothing to be done about it. There isn't, you know, we don't need to increase the funding, we don't need to decrease it, just let it go, and we'll take it step by step.
And that's it? Unless you guys think I missed anything? Do we have questions from the committee members about the budget meeting? Please, Member Johnson-Massad.
I can just add, we, like, I think Member Exstrom's summary was great. We don't want people to feel like, because there's only 2,000 in there, like, not to be thinking about other things you want to do. We can adjust the budget, but also, we talked a little bit about how members can kind of come up with professional development plans for yourselves, like, so we can figure out what we want to be doing. And I think there is, there would be help probably from ASC available if people want help figuring out a professional development plan for yourself as a school committee member.
Thank you. Anything else about budget? All right, Vice Chair Wall, how about a report on our re-envisioning process?
We have wrapped up all of the meetings at the schools to talk with the parents, and our next step is to, as a committee, meet with the staff. So, I'm informing the committee now that that's what we're going to be doing next. And then we're going to have a committee meeting to figure out how to present what we have discovered to the school committee. So, I hope by the, by next week, by next month's meeting, we will have accomplished all of that and be ready to bring our report to the school committee.
Great. Questions or comments? Please, my right hand.
Would that be a report to the school committee in December or January? For the December meeting? Yeah, great. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I had one, I lost it. I might come back to it if I remember what it was. I've done that now twice today. I don't know what's going on. All right, Secretary, or Member Johnson-Massad, update from policy, please?
Yes, we met yesterday. We had kind of a special meeting. It was an evening meeting where we experimented with having an agenda, which was public comment followed by discussion about the cell phone policy, followed by another public comment in hopes that people would have attended and kind of shared their thoughts, heard our thoughts, and then shared their thoughts again. But we needed to do more outreach to get people there, and so it was just the committee members and the superintendent there. There is a draft cell phone policy that we discussed at the meeting, and it's available if you go to the gpsk12.org website, and then you go to School Committee, and then you go to Subcommittee, and then you go to Policy, you should be able to find it's under the meeting materials.
It's easier than he's making it sound.
Well, it's a lot of this. But it's there and available to look at. It's essentially, I mean, we're trying to fix a problem after having it, I guess, which was the superintendent in coming up with the cell phone program, didn't have a policy from the school committee to work from. So, we are trying to address that after the program has already been implemented, but we think it will be a useful tool for the administration going forward. And then we scheduled our next meeting in December, and we're going to be looking at Section G of the policy in our overhaul of the policy manual. Section G was approved on first reading by this full committee, so the policy committee will look at it and any feedback that people have offered, and then bring it back in December here for a second reading and final reading. We also tabled the discussion about the, a decision about the cell phone policy, so that will be on the agenda in December as well. And then finally, teachers are looking for some more tools around sexual health to have in the schools, and so we're going to be having that discussion at the next meeting as well. So, that's the report from policy.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the committee for policy? Please.
Why is it that, why was the, I'm thinking this through in my head, so my question won't come out garbled, I'm sure. Why is it, why would the policy committee discuss materials regarding sexual health with the teachers? Because that seems more of an administrative and curriculum thing to me. Again, I'm thinking it through in my head, that's why I'm asking in question.
It's about whether the school committee will make sexual health materials available in the schools, so it is a policy decision of the committee, and it's something that isn't addressed as yet in the, in the policy manual.
We don't have a policy on passing out condoms in the schools.
Okay, thank you. That's what I needed.
There you go.
I need a little bit more direct. Thank you.
Sure. That's, I mean, I'm just simplifying.
That's fine, yeah, I know.
Sorry. Yeah, yeah.
I don't do well when we dance around stuff.
It's fine. Other questions for Glenn on policy? All right, and I remembered my question about, thank you, Member Johnson Musad, and I remember my question about the re-envisioning process, and I'm not trying to create work, but I'm curious if, when the meetings happen with the staff, will the information that was gathered from the community be shared with them?
I would imagine that it would. I have not spoken at length with the superintendent
That's fine.
about how to do it, but she wants us to attend a meeting when she has all of the staff there anyway.
Yeah.
So that we will have access to everybody and how they feel about the re-envisioning of schools.
Yeah, okay. And I, she and I had, I know she's working on synthesizing the information already, so I'll check with her.
She's already done that and sent it to us.
Oh, great, great. So it makes sense if we could share that too with the, with the staff. Awesome, thank you. Any other questions for the subcommittees in any capacity? All right, so our budget update, Mr. Pickett is here with us tonight. Thank you for being here, Andy. What do you have for us?
Well, you have in your packets the November reports, as things stand, based on the, we'll say, the original budget. One of the things that we discussed in the budget workshop, which will be reflect, this budget subcommittee, excuse me, which will be reflected in the next report, was that with all the summer activity that we have had regarding finalizing the federal grants that we received, revisiting our ESR funding and how we're going to use that in addition to the other revolving accounts that we have at our disposal, and the personnel as we knew it at that time, we're going to have another realignment in a sense, as we've talked about where, what is it that we're going to use, for lack of a better phrase, of backing into the city general fund budget number that was appropriated to the schools. So just one of the things to highlight that was also discussed at the subcommittee meeting is that what we have done, if you're looking to see, we've, and we can share this and discuss at the next update, we're going to be using more of the ESR funds for the personnel and less out of the school choice, because if you remember, last year, we used about $660,000 of school choice for the prior year's negotiated contract settlements, in addition to another $600,000, $700,000 for normal operating expenses. So we used pretty much the entire balance except for $200,000, $300,000, $300,000 in the revolving account. And best practices being what they are, you'd like to keep like a prior years, some, there are various, you know, concepts, people do, either the prior year receipts is what you carry over in your revolving account, some organizations, school districts use a percent of your budget is what you have, because school choice is the closest thing to a contingency fund for school districts. So we originally planned on using about $480,000 of school choice funds in our FY '23 budget. We are now down to using 173,489. So that will get us back to, we're still using current year receipts for current year expenditures, but we're not using as much as we anticipated. So we need to get back into, and that would then get us in line with your policy regarding use of revolving funds. So with that, I can answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Andy. Questions? Yes, Mayor Ruda Gardner, please.
When you say that you're going to use more of the ESR funds, ESR, ESR, tomato, tomato, for personnel, are you speaking about hiring, or is it a broad?
Nope. It's realigning in a sense, it's positions that were, it's a combination, I guess I'd say, positions that were in the budget originally, but then we're also shifting regarding some of the, I don't say if they're new necessarily, there might be a couple of new positions, but it's also just reusing it so that we don't create that funding cliff by building up our school choice in a sense. So we want to use these one-time funds and then build up, you know, so that once those funds go away, we'll have the funds available to us, should, again, when we revisit those positions, say, at that time, whether they're continued to be needed, or do we, again, realign it at that point.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or comments? All right.
I do just want to just share something regarding, when we did this line in the sand, as we talk about it regarding positions, just to give you an idea of the challenges that, to kind of dovetail off of the superintendent's report. We currently have 20 unfilled IA positions in the district, so, and even as our best laid plans of trying to get, they're budgeted for, we have the funds allocated, but they are unfilled at this time, and it's a revolving door, so it's a struggle that we're having, and it's not only here in Greenfield, it's everywhere and stuff, but, you know, those things do have budgetary impacts as far as trying to come up with alternative ways to recruit people to take those positions and so on and so forth. So just wanted to, another little fact about.
That's helpful, yeah, thank you.
I actually did have another question.
Please, go ahead.
Okay, so that's, I'm looking at your balance and circuit breaker, that's a significant balance. What is the plan for spending that? Because you do have to spend it, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct, we're going to be using $1,340,000 of circuit breaker this year as our plan.
Good. Other questions? Please, Member Johnson Musad.
I don't think we have, will have any, but we just, well, this committee endorsed question one, which just passed, so there's going to be the millionaire's tax, and some of that funding is supposed to go to education, but I don't think we have any picture yet of what that impact that will have on us. But we'll look forward to finding that out.
Fingers crossed, yes.
You're so optimistic. I have zero optimism around that, because transportation's in there too, you know, they're going to use it for roads and bridges before they ever give it to education.
Or the MBTA.
Right, or inside the 495 loop. I could go on.
We do have schools past 28.
Any other questions for Mr. Pickett? We appreciate you, Andy. Thank you for being here. Okay, we're into kind of the meat of the agenda here with our kind of business items. The first one, the public health preparedness discussion, that is my kind of compromise during new business in our September meeting. Member Johnson Musad asked if we could have a discussion item around the possibility of remote schooling near the holidays to help to prevent COVID spread. And I really didn't want to talk about that, but I want to acknowledge that we made a commitment to do new business items, and I'll explain myself, the first thing is, I think it's really important that we broaden. We have learned so much about public health through the COVID pandemic, and one of the things is that you can prevent virus spread of all types by doing the same practices that we had during COVID. And from, I don't often talk about my personal perspective as a parent, I think it's a tough situation, but I have one child who has been sick five times since we started school and the end of August, and none of it has been COVID. And so I don't understand why we would talk more about the COVID piece and not also talk about other pieces of not spreading disease. And then the second thing I did was I asked the superintendent to get the information from DESI about what it would look like if we were to do something like that, and my understanding is that ASKP is prepared to talk about what we've learned from DESI, and then that, after that, I would open it up for a discussion from the, from the committee. Please, go ahead.
Sure, thanks. I'm going to start with just a few things that we continue to put out there to our school community. The info on our website about vaccination and flu clinic opportunities. We also have a nurse leader who updates families on when parents should or should not send their children to school. The nurse leader also meets with the city every week, and they review Board of Health information and discuss plans of action together and what, if anything, we could be doing more of. We still offer to all of our schools hand sanitizer. We encourage hand washing, often, frequently. We also have a lot of our population that chooses to wear masks, even though we do not have a mask policy. So those are some things that we certainly are continuing to do to try to mitigate the spread of any germs. We know, beside COVID, there have been many things going around that are definitely contagious, so. But we also, Christine did reach out to DESI, and in those conversations and communications, it was made clear that if we close preventatively, we would have to make up all of the days for which we closed. With that being said, folks often say, well, we could file for a waiver. In a conversation with Robert Curtin, who is the Associate Commissioner, he was very clear that you could file for a waiver. He did not believe that one would be able to be granted, and ultimately said that while the commissioner is the one that determines the waivers, he can say factually that none have ever been issued for preventative strategies such as this. So just wanted that to be known and out there, because those days would certainly have to be made up in addition to any snow days. We're getting into winter in New England, and that certainly is always on our radar with the weather.
Thank you. Questions, comment, discussion from the committee, please? Secretary Exstrom, go ahead.
I, when Member Johnson Musad brought this up, I thought, you know, actually, that kind of makes sense. I mean, we want, we want to be certain that everyone's staying healthy, and yeah, everyone went home to head homeschool for a long time, and so I let that sort of sit on the, on the pro side, and then I thought of all of the cons, in that we know that students, when they were at home, weren't learning as they should have been. The teachers were struggling to convey their messages. We had to do a lot of negotiations around teaching from their homes to students. And I think, in the long run, doing something like that would be, would be more detrimental than remaining in school. I just, I think that parents would struggle because they're, they need to be at work, and kids had to have so much supervision, and all of those things. And I think that in the long run, it wouldn't be as helpful as it would be to have kids in school. That was just, after I'd mulled it over for a while.
Member Denise, go ahead, and then Member Martini, please.
I don't really think that any of this is about whether or not kids should be in school. I think that the thing is that we must be quite vigilant, because those who've had COVID have issues with their immune, with their immune system now, and are more likely to catch all the other diseases that are going around, I mean, the other viruses that are going around. So that's why we're having a rise in issues with the flu, issues with, I think, RSV, though I could be wrong. So people are getting sick more so because they've already had COVID. That's something that they're discovering. So I think being really vigilant and on top of public health, you know, and prevention measures is especially important right now, because we are going to see an uptick in people being sick because of where we've been. So it's not really about kids being in or out of school, it's more so making sure that we have as many preventative measures in place as possible. I mean, can we give out, could we give out masks? I don't know if we, if we offer that anymore, if kids need it. I know lots of kids who have COVID that are going to school. So I think that it was a really good question that you brought up for new business, Glenn, because we should be mindful of it and keep it on our radar. And that, I mean, that's why, because people are getting sick from other things.
Go ahead.
Well, that's certainly true. I think about everybody I know has been sick at some point in the last few weeks, including me, thus, my handy mask, I hope I don't give any of you anything. But I just wanted to note, I think, unless I, correct me if I'm wrong, but in the superintendent's most recent parent update sent by email, there was notice to everyone that DESI would be providing some COVID tests for, specifically for use before returning to school after Thanksgiving and Christmas break, and that wasn't mentioned, so Karen, I don't know if you have any information you wanted to share with people about that, but I just thought I would bring that up.
It's funny, because I just wrote that note to myself. I was at a meeting with DESI on Friday, and they will be providing four tests to each individual, so at some point, Eric Kevier, our facilities manager, is going to get the information on where we have to drive to pick them up, knowing DESI, it'll probably be somewhere past 495, but those will be available and distributed at some point, once we get clarification on when they'll be available.
Member Johnson Musad, go ahead.
Well, I'm really glad we're having this discussion, because I think we can anticipate the spike in COVID and other infectious diseases after the Thanksgiving vacation and after Christmas. I do think that COVID still deserves our special attention. There are still a lot of people dying of COVID, and students, and the interruption of student learning by getting tested positive and having to stay home is one concern, but the other concern is just the way these schools can become vectors of transmission to other folks who are more vulnerable to COVID and, and could have very serious reactions to that, including some of our own students who also have, some of whom may have immune, immune issues. So I'm disappointed to hear that the department is not supportive of schools taking preventive action around remote learning. I think that that's, that's very disappointing, because I think that it could be a very effective strategy to stop the spread of COVID and other infectious diseases. So in the absence of that, I'm going to make a motion that we direct the superintendent to implement a mask mandate and increase COVID testing to the greatest extent possible for one week after Thanksgiving and two weeks after the Christmas break, to reduce the spread of COVID and other infectious viruses.
Is there a second?
Second.
Let's have a discussion? Secretary Exstrom, go ahead.
I can't imagine that, I can't imagine that the community would accept our making a mask mandate. I, I think it would be to make a recommendation, I think would be an easier sell and remind people about the importance. I think making a mask mandate would be difficult for us to enforce, as it was when it was around previously. So I don't know if that's something that I would support.
Other discussion? Please, Mayor Ruda Gardner.
Well, I was actually going to discuss, I just let everybody else talk first on the other, and I can't imagine doing remote learning, given what we know about the learning loss that occurred. And we do have rules about keeping your children at home when they're sick, and we hope that most parents can most parents can follow those. And I understand sometimes that is a hardship as well, but we have flu, we have RSV, we have COVID, we have a lot of different infectious diseases that come up this time of year. So as far as the remote learning piece is, I don't think I could support that and I don't know that we could, I necessarily support a mask mandate either for the reasons that have been discussed. We have, I think we could do a recommendation. I think people, by and large, should follow the guidelines that we set out when your children are sick or when you're sick. Keep them at home, get tested, and yes, wear your masks for the appropriate amount of time that you have to do it. So I wouldn't support a mandate as well.
I saw Member Johnson Musad and then Member Denise and then Member Wall, please, go ahead.
I voted to lift the mask mandate because I felt at the time that it seemed sort of like COVID theater in a way to have the mandate and yet not really have the tools to be able to enforce it and also all the students getting together in the cafeteria without masks, obviously, to eat. But then I read a study that there were two schools in Massachusetts which continued with mask mandates after all the rest of the schools lifted them and those schools had better outcomes in terms of COVID. So it made me think that even if it's not able to be enforced perfectly, it does seem like having the mandate does have beneficial outcomes in terms of slowing the spread of COVID and other diseases.
I 100% agree with Glenn on that. The schools that I interact with that my child goes to still have mask mandates and it makes me feel very comfortable. But I think that one of the problems with it is the testing. It's very hard to get tests when you need them quickly. I had very close contact last week and I had to run around and get tests and couldn't get them, couldn't find them. So I'm interested in what you were saying, Karen, about the tests that DESI is going to offer. Is that per student, per teacher? How does that, four tests per person? Can you elaborate on that? And then I have another thing after that.
Sure. It's my understanding it's four tests per student and staff member.
Is that a one-time?
It's a one-time DESI quote-unquote donation. The nurse leader just sent me a message that they will be picking them up on the 18th in Pittsfield.
Okay, that's great. And then I just have sort of a comment that I'm directing to the public who's watching. I found this out the other day. If you are on Mass Health, you can go get eight tests per month for free at Walgreens or CVS and not very many people know that. And that kind of saved me the other week when I had to test every single day. So if you don't have that information, that can make things difficult. So it would be great to put that information on the website as part of preventative measures. People should know that they can access that because four tests, eight tests a month will really help if you find yourself in a bind and don't know whether you can send your child to school or not.
I don't think that it's fair for the school committee to impose a mask mandate when no one is successful in this, in any community in mandating masks. I mean, that didn't work when we were all scared we were going to die. I don't think that it would work now to, I think suggesting masks, perhaps having them available at schools for people to wear, I'm for that, but mandating, I can't support that because I think it's unfair to the school administration to ask them to enforce something that's not enforceable across the world.
Member Martini, go ahead.
I think that schools and the general community are quite different when it comes to enforcing a mask mandate. And in regards to schools, I am aware of other school districts that did effectively implement a mask mandate. And I still have concerns about the lack of enforcement of our own, our own previous mandate in the past, as was attested to by our student representatives every month while that was going on. That being said, correct me if I'm wrong, but I seem to remember some information, I think from maybe our February meeting, about DESI essentially saying that schools may not discipline a student for not cooperating with a mask mandate from that point forward. And I would still have the same concerns as I did then, which was a big part of why I also supported stopping the mask mandate that we had previously, that our teachers weren't really being given the tools and support to enforce a mandate as it is and that I feel contributed to behavioral issues that were rampant in schools last year, kind of giving the message that it's okay to flout school rules and disobey guidance given by teachers about this, then why not something else? And I really would like us to be much more consistent about enforcing the policies that we do have and supporting our teachers as authority figures in our schools because they need to not be disrespected the way that they have been. So I think it would be really, really difficult for our teachers to try to deal with a new mandate like that, a temporary one.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, so we will move to a vote. How about any abstentions from voting? And no votes. I've got one, two, three, four, no votes and yes votes. Okay. Two yes votes. So the motion fails, but it was a helpful discussion. Thank you all. We can talk further about the public health stuff if there's more to say.
I'm sorry, I had my head down. Member Denise and Member Johnson Musad, you were the yes votes?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on that? Okay. So we've got a couple of additional, I guess purges is our library and old curriculum pieces continue. We've done these votes before. The first one that we have here, they're both from the Four Corners School. The first is a vote to declare the curriculum books at Discovery School at Four Corners as surplus. And there is a document that, I mean, it's a list. I think if you're a teacher, it might be more helpful. I certainly don't have a problem with it, but at this point, let's have a motion first before I discuss it any further. A motion to declare as surplus the curriculum materials as listed on the DSFC surplus curriculum list included with the materials for the meeting.
So moved.
That was Extrum and a second.
A second.
Member Wall. And any further discussion on this item? I saw a member, Extrum first and then Member Johnson Musad and then Member Denise, please.
Karen, maybe, I don't, perhaps you'll know this, can you remind me what it is that we do with the books? Can we, is there somewhere that we can donate them as opposed to them being, I know we've had this discussion before, I just can't remember and couldn't find it in my notes, that we can donate them as opposed to recycling?
Unfortunately, we haven't found anyone willing to take them as a donation. So we've reached out to companies that publish them, we've reached out to other organizations and many are so old or so outdated that no one wants those. So we recycle, unfortunately.
Okay, thanks.
Member Johnson Musad, go ahead, and then Member Denise.
I was just wondering if we might be able to vote on items nine through 12 as a consent agenda? Just merge them and vote to approve all of them and then have the discussion and vote once.
I'm not hearing anyone saying they have a problem with that. So we would have, so it would be the curriculum, the library books at Discovery, the donation of dictionaries from the Elks Lodge, and then the monetary donation from the class of 54 for the libraries. That's what you're asking, to do a consent for those?
Yes.
Okay, so who made the motion? Was it Member Wall?
I did.
Okay. Do you have, you want to?
Well, I actually, I think it's important that we talk about the donation.
Well, what he said was we would still talk about everything after. We'd just do it as one vote. Yeah, that's okay.
That's fine.
Mayor Rita Gardner, yes?
I'm missing, I don't see the money, the 304, I think, dollars. I don't see that on the agenda.
Yeah, it's, it's the handwritten note.
Oh, I know. I know what it is, but did I miss it?
It's to accept the monetary donation from.
The monetary donation from the class of 54.
Reading Street.
Oh, the agenda, yeah, I apologize. The agenda had to be updated a few times. So a friendly amendment to the motion to make it a consent item for agenda items nine through 12. Vice Chair Wall, you said you were okay with that? Yes, and Member Extrum, you were okay with that? Okay. So that is what we're doing and we can have discussion at this point on the full lot of those. Who would like to discuss? Yeah, Member Denise, go ahead. Sorry, I forgot you were waiting to talk. I'm sorry.
Am I supposed to have a list of these curriculum books and library books? Because I do not have one in the packet.
The online.
It was over 200 pages long.
Okay, never mind, never mind. That's great. I just didn't know. Yes, please, thank you for not.
And the online materials do have the full?
Yes.
In them, yeah. So you could, anyone can look at it there online.
And I carefully examined each and every one.
Yeah, I just.
Thank you, thank you both for your commitment to the detail of this. We appreciate it. Someone else? Yeah, Member Martini, please, go ahead.
It's not right in front of us because it was so long, but as I recall from looking at it, about the curriculum materials at Four Corners, it seemed like, but I couldn't really tell from the list, that they were all Scott Forsman Reading Street stuff. Is that accurate? That's the way I interpreted it and I tried looking up some of the items to see if they are list, like, part of that or not, but I wasn't sure, so I just.
Principal Browning compiled this list, so I have not looked at every material that he is declaring surplus, but more than likely, that is probably a majority of the materials at that building, along with maybe some Pearson envisioned math old materials that were from about eight or nine years ago. But I could get back to you for certain on that.
Okay. And I seem to recall previously, we had declared the same type of materials from GMS that were from Reading Street as well. I wanted to ask whether or not we have additional specific reading materials that we are planning to dispose of similarly, or is that going to be the extent of it?
Are you asking if any other school building still needs to weed through that?
I mean, I can sort of see the clear intention to eliminate Reading Street materials from the district, but I know that we also have some other programs or providers' materials such as Fontes and Pennell, for example, that have been in the district. And I wanted to know, are we also going to be removing additional materials or stopping with Reading Street? Do you see what I'm asking?
No.
I think I do. We are still weeding to this day at Newton, so there could be other materials. There is another curriculum resource that was only in that building that is being weeded because it doesn't align with the curriculum that we have adopted. So I don't want to say definitively that we are done weeding because we are not. And even though we've declared surplus at the majority of the other schools, we're still finding a lot of materials as we move folks or if they go to a certain closet to find something. So we're really trying to be consciously aware of what's there that really needs for space issues as well, but also so that we're not using outdated materials and those that are not aligned with Massachusetts standards.
Right, okay. So it's a bit of a sleuthing mission then. Thank you.
Other questions or comments, please, Vice Chair Wall?
I think it's important that we acknowledge the dictionaries that the Elks Lodge has donated to the students. What a wonderful gesture and how lovely that students have the opportunity to have a dictionary for themselves and also to acknowledge the monetary donation from the class of 1954.
Yes, thank you. I know the Elks program was in the recorder, there was an article about it, and I forget, but there's, it's, I believe, decades that they've been doing this for our third graders, which I think is really cool. And to just tag on to and wholeheartedly agree with Vice Chair Wall on the donation from the class of 1954, there's a wonderful handwritten note that's included in the materials. And I was not surprised to see that that's the class that was James Fotopoulos, who I'm sure is watching at home. Thank you, Jim, and thank you to all the other folks that signed the letter. It's, the penmanship also brings me back because no one writes like this anymore and it's just beautiful and you can read it. And it's just great. $304 from the class of 54. And Jim Fotopoulos also was a longtime teacher in the district, retired from teaching in Greenfield. So it's just a wonderful way to contribute to the schools and we're very gracious for that donation. Thank you. Other comments, questions? Mayor Rita Gardner, please.
I was just going to say the same thing, if you hadn't said it, and that is one. Thank you, but also just to see the handwritten note and that beautiful penmanship, and I still like to write handwritten notes myself, but also was not surprised to see Jim at the top of the list, but that doesn't mean that all the other people there don't deserve a lot of recognition too. So thank you to all of you for that. Very much appreciated.
Absolutely. Absolutely, and I'll read them all since we're talking about it. William and Evie Bog, Donald Parda, Ellie Green, I believe it's Clardy, Bernard Bergeron, and the last one is the only one I'm not sure how to pronounce. Brutta DeDinos Hanley is my best guess. And those are the folks that were mentioned in the note. And for folks watching at home, it certainly is worth looking at the materials online just to see the note. It's pretty awesome. So thank you to all of them. And any further comments or discussion from the committee before we vote? I'm not hearing any. So the vote again is for items nine through 12 as a consent item. And I'll look at this point for any abstentions, any no votes. And so that passes unanimously. Thank you. And thank you for, Member Johnson Musad, for suggesting such a streamlining process. And that brings us to new business for this meeting. Anyone with new business items, please. Member Denise, go ahead.
This is not new business, but it's a question about business?
Sure.
On the minutes from October 12th, not the 17th one, you mentioned that you were going to search and prepare a new evaluation tool for the superintendent and that you would be bringing it up in. in this month's meeting. So I'm just curious if that has been moved to December and if you've made any progress on?
It will be moved to December. I mentioned my sick child. I've barely had a day to breathe because he's always home from school.
That's fine. I just wanted to check in.
Yes. No, we absolutely will be moving forward with that and I will be looking for help, I believe, from the committee, um, in putting that, that tool together. So, yes, we'll talk about that in December. Thank you. Any other new business items? Okay, so, um, the correspondence is worth mentioning. It is included in the packet. Uh, we don't vote on it. We don't really have to discuss it, but it's worth acknowledging there was a nice letter about how well the band did, uh, the high school band when they went to an event at UMass, which is great. Um, and then also, uh, a second grade teacher, uh, Ms. Silk, um, was acknowledged for her exceptional, uh, work with math with one of her students. Um, so just kind of cool to see that stuff and to have it, uh, be a part of our, uh, agenda. And our final item is we will be moving into executive session. Uh, we, this, uh, blurb about the executive session and the exemption reasons does say that we will not return to open session, but that is in fact incorrect. We do need to return to open session for a vote, um, on one of the items. So at this point, I would like a motion to, um, open the executive session for exemption reason two, which is to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Exemption reason three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair, so declares, and I do declare. And exemption reason seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements. This is just approving minutes from our last executive session. Um, and as I stated, we will return to open session. So we will actually adjourn the public session when we return from our executive session. Can I have a motion to open the executive session, please? So moved. People can't wait. And, and I'll, I'll assume that that was a second. I think that was Weida Gardner and Daneeve in, in concert there. Um, and we do need a roll call vote for executive session.
Member Daneeve?
Yes.
Sorry. Uh, Secretary Extron, yes. Member Johnson Musad?
Yes.
Member Martini?
Yes.
Chair Poiroti?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weida Gardner?
Yes.
We are unanimous and we are going into executive session as of whatever time it is. Cause I can't.
It is 7:13 PM. Thank you. We are back into public session from executive session at 8:11 PM. And I would like a motion for approval of the M-O-U, the memorandum of understanding on the superintendent's contract as discussed and voted on in executive session. So move. And a second, please.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, and we will, um, just for the sake of, of being, yeah, transparent, above board, all of that, let's do a roll call vote on this one, please.
Member Daneeve?
Yes.
Extron, yes. Member Johnson Musad?
Yes.
Member Martini?
Yes.
Chair Poiroti?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weida Gardner?
Yes.
We are unanimous.
And a motion to adjourn the public session, please.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
And any abstentions from adjourning, any no votes? That is unanimous. We're adjourned at 8:12 PM. Thank you all.